Okay.
Okay, you're good?
I've got two, okay, three, four. Before we before we begin the meeting, an announcement for public information. This is a web-based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. This session is being audio recorded. Two, please be advised that today we are also recording the video of the proceedings. Third, we will not use the chat feature in this meeting. Fourth, to ensure sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Five, commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute, except when speaking or voting. Six, this meeting is open to the public, but is not a public hearing. Therefore, no members of the public may speak unless specifically invited to do so. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff or chair. Lastly, we appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about this process, you may call our staff at 860-444-5813 after the meeting has ended. My call a meeting of the Conservation Commission. Today is 28th of May. Please stand for a pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first order of business is appointment of alternates. I guess we don't have to deal with that. We don't have any alternates.
Julie can sit for a vacancy.
Okay. For Julie, please sit for Wade.
No, a vacancy.
Okay. Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
Second item on the agenda is approval of the 23rd April meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Move the minutes be approved?
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Discussion, any comments? Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? Motion carries. Item number three, applications. First is C20-0735 Pepperbox Road for a garage. Rich Gano is the owner and applicant.
The applicant is attending the meeting. I don't know, Rich, did you want to run through a summary? Or do you want staff to just do it? And you want to answer first?
Why don't you just give us the highlights, Maureen?
Okay. I've met with these property owners a number of times. They're trying to locate independent, single-car garage where, I believe it's for a classic car on their property. This property is down on Pepperbox Road. It's probably a large percentage of it is wetland. The existing house is up along by the road, and they're trying to locate the accessory structure next to their garage, which would be within the upper review non-encroachment area. It's level. It's flat. It's right off the driveway. They've prepared a lot of photographs and diagrams for you to look at, to take you through their sighting.
Okay.
They've all been attached to your application.
Okay. Any other comments?
Julie Wayne Scott. I had a couple of questions on this.
Wait, we have, can we entertain questions now? Or we're just going to accept the application? Okay, I'm sorry. You're welcome.
Thank you. I just was curious about the drainage, the slope of the floor of the garage. And the, I really appreciated the very thorough application, by the way, and the photographs were very helpful. So one thing would be the slope of the floor of that garage. How close to those boulders you are on that one side? There's still, Maureen, I presume you've walked this so. So I found it hard with the size of the displays that I had to see any contours of what was downstream. But you might include on your application the neighbors that are across the street from you. If that is truly downstream, I'm not sure. But it's just for, I don't know, for those perhaps.
So there's, across the street from us, our neighbors are set back, I would say, a couple hundred feet into the woods. It's all wetlands in front of them. So there's no drainage that goes from our house across the street to their, you know, to their property whatsoever.
We're the lowest lying lot in the area. And so half of our property to the right is wetlands. To the left of us, on our left-hand side of our property, is ledged in the back. So it precludes us from putting anything on the left side. And then in the back, where we were thinking we were going to put it in the backyard, our septic system goes all the way. It covers our whole entire backyard. And we can't drive over our septic system.
So it looked like that previously there was some structure there that was removed or some dry pavement that was removed before.
That was before we bought it.
Yeah, that was before we bought it. There was a shed in the back that was moved. For whatever reason, they had put it there. But it was moved, so it's now in our, it's in our backyard out of the buffer zone. But as far as the drainage or the pitch on the land, it's got a slight pitch away from the house. But it doesn't, it's really not, it's really pretty flat, in all honesty. And as far as any pitch of the floor of the garage or anything, that would be level. There wouldn't be any pitch of the garage. The only thing would just be the pitch of the roof and the rainwater coming off the roof. And I'd have to say it would probably be a couple of feet, I think a couple of feet off of the boulders.
Okay. That's good. And so, and there was no, I guess, is there a construction plan or like hay bales? Any narrative on how you're actually going to execute this project?
I have not done anything yet as far as that goes. You know, we'll look to you guys for guidance as far as that goes. If approved, then, you know, we'll do whatever we need to as far as that goes. But we haven't really gone that far yet. I haven't really, I got a rough plan and what I want to do. But, you know, until we get approval to do anything, we kind of really haven't gone that far. But our goal is to protect the wetlands. You know, obviously, we don't want to, we don't want to hurt them or disturb them in any way. You can, you know, we're up for suggestions, open for suggestions.
And we're staying on this side of the boulders. The boulders are really a barrier between our yard and the wetlands.
Yeah, I never had a chance to see the actual space or the property, but that sounds like a perfect delineation. And like I said, a very thorough, very thorough application. Thank you for those, the detail you put into it.
Any other questions?
I had one, Rich. Are we, are you going to pour this on a concrete pad? Or you're just going to assemble this on gravel?
There'll be a concrete pad.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Okay. We need a motion to accept this? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next application, C20. Thank you, Kathy and Sir, thank you very much. Moving on to C20-0815 Leary Drive, in-ground pool. Kimberly Devlin and Robert Ruhl, owner and applicant.
Hang on a second, are we good? It was an email that popped up for your outlook.
It just played a delay.
Okay. Oh, we're good, sorry, a little technical glitch, sorry. Yeah, this is a new application for some existing subdivision lot, Leary Drive. The lot is primarily wetland. There's a non-encroachment line that was established as part of the original house construction. And the non-encroachment line is pretty tight off to the back of the house. The applicants are asking for relief in order to put a pool behind the deck behind their house. It will involve letting disturbance, not only to put the pool in, but temporary disturbance, just to get around the house to get to where they want to put the pool. And they're proposing to replant that and restore that when they're done. There's also part of this application, I hope you can hear me.
Okay.
They have three dead trees very close proximity to the back of their house and two more dead trees that are of a sufficient height that if they fall, they could have damage to the structure. Because there's more than one or two, and they're in the wetland, I asked them to include this in the application so that the commission could consider the tree removal in the wetlands as well. But clearly, that's of more immediacy than the plan to look at the pool. So they asked me as by now if they could proceed with the tree removal ahead of getting permission for it or denial for the pool.
Okay.
So these maps, again, photographs, asked them to include a lot of photographs because it's really difficult to get out and see some of these sites these days. But they included a picture in this packet from their back porch of the dead trees. They're all birches, and I don't know what killed them, but they are very, they're gone. Any thoughts on letting them go ahead and take the trees down while we go forward with this?
I have a question. Depending, it'd be good to include the length of time, you know, we normally have a permit for five years or something for continued maintenance of briars or whatever, of brush and things. Maybe if the tree removal and a continued maintenance of that particular area was as a separate application from the pool, then this one could be executed almost, well, I mean relatively, you know, so that we have a timeframe on it.
Well, I guess the other point of discussion would be if you have dead trees in your yard, requires a permit. I asked them to include it because it's in the area where they're proposing construction.
So the trees, Michael Stankoff, just a question for clarification, Maureen. The trees are in the yard, not in the wetland?
No, they are in wetland.
They are in wetlands?
Yes.
Okay. So I think in that case, if we're being consistent, we should require the permit for the maintenance of those, the taking down of those trees, just so that way we continue to say that all activity in wetlands does require permits. I don't know that we would need to, just to your thought, Julie, I'm not sure if we need to add a continued maintenance clause, simply from the thought that if it's taking down these trees and then this is also going to be in the construction area, the ground's going to be immediately disturbed. And so normally, we want continued maintenance when we put down things like conservation, seed mix and plantings. But if the land that is being proposed to be acted on is next going to be disturbed, then continued maintenance?
I'm questioning maintenance of the briars. What does maintenance of the briars actually mean? And for how long does that maintenance? It's an annual thing, twice a year, for five years? And then come back and talk or whatever?
That request, I think, is to maintain them along the fence. If you authorize the pool, they have to have a fence. So you don't want to have the briars coming across the channel.
Okay, thanks.
So Julie, you're all set?
Yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay.
I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll accept the we'll accept the application and move on with the processing. Thank you. Next item is C20-09446 Boston Post Road, redevelopment of existing filling station. PMG Group LLC. Applicant Petroleum Marketing Group LLC owner, David T. East agent, David T. Faust agent. Questions or comments?
They want to make, can I go? The applicants are here with their engineer, and they would like to make a presentation to the commission.
Okay.
All set?
Go ahead, gentlemen.
Dave, we're going to bring up your PDFs, and then you'll only see that, but everyone will be able to hear your voice.
Okay, great. Hello, my name's David Faust with CMG Engineering. With me is Mark Smith. We're here representing PMG Co-op LLC. They're looking to, basically, they have an existing Henny Penny gas station at 446 Boston Post Road. And if you could bring up the first PDF, please, that shows the existing conditions.
Hang on, Dave.
Okay, no problem.
A navigational issue. There we go. That was just him. And I have to hit share screen? No, they see it already, right? Yeah. Is that good, Dave? Are we there?
I don't see it on my screen.
So go down to the meeting controls.
Share screen.
Sure.
And this one?
Yep.
Big up.
Can you see it now?
See your screen.
We see the screen, but not the plan.
It says your screen sharing, or resume share. Can I jump in? Yes.
Open the
All right, let's go to How about now?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, you're in.
It was a magic touch.
Okay, so this is a, this is a plan that shows the proposed plan. I guess I'll just run through this quick. There's an existing gas station there now. And currently, what the applicant is proposing to do is expand the site towards the rear of the property to the south. There's an existing isolated wetlands area at the very back of the property. Currently, the DOT has two or three catch basins that drain down Boston Post Road and then run along the, I guess it would be the east side of the property. There's a drain pipe that discharges to a head wall to that existing wetlands at the rear. DOT does have an easement across Henny Penny's property to discharge. It's been in place since the '30s or '40s. The existing Henny Penny site has two catch basins at the front of the property, both of which drain, connect to that same drain pipe. And all of the parking lot and drainage for the existing station just says, they're just shallow catch basins with no sumps. They discharge directly to the pipe into the isolated wetland. The wetland in the back, there's actually no overflow. We've had the wetland scientist, as well as we've been out there during some rain events. And the site is actually underlaid by really good, about 25 feet of sand material. So basically, most, mostly all the rain soaks into that wetland in the back, and there's actually no outlet from that area. The proposed project, we're proposing to improve the stormwater conditions at the site. There'll be, I don't know if it's possible to go to the grading and drainage sheet, which is C3? If it's possible to switch to that next one? Oh, great, thank you. So with the proposed expansion of the site, there will be an increase to impervious area. So what we're proposing to do is replace the existing catch basin at the front of the site near the curb cut with a HydroWorks water quality unit, which will have a capacity of 95 gallons storage in case there's an oil spill, as well as a deep sump for collecting sediment. That will collect runoff from sort of the front half of the pump islands. On the west side of the property, there'll be a new catch basin. There's a few new parking spaces, which will be expanded towards the edge of the property. That will also have a HydroWorks water quality unit, which will discharge to a small drywall system in the front to account for the additional parking spaces over there. And that's, that catch basin just picks up the drainage area from those parking places on the side. The main parking area, there are two new deep sump catch basins in the middle, which will then discharge to a 3,000, through a 3,000-gallon oil-water separator to provide treatment for the main sort of pump island area, as well as where the tank fill area would be located, with a new discharge to the wetland area in about, in the center of the site. The roof area from the proposed Henny Penny building will discharge to a drywall system in the back with the goal of, we, and our calculations show there's no increase to runoff to the rear wetland. We have erosion control. We're not proposing any disturbance to the wetland area. As part of the project, we would also like to propose there's some debris and trash and stuff that's been dumped in there over the years. The applicant would like to clean up the wetlands area. And the wetland scientist has suggested we also do some supplementary plantings as part of the project. And I'd be happy to either answer questions or they can, at the next hearing, you know, answer questions as well. That's sort of a brief overview of the project.
David, Rich Muckel here. This, the existing building has been there for a number of years. There were a lot of repairs that used to be done on the site. Is there any concern that there might be contamination in the soil?
We had talked to the applicant, Steve Salveggio with PMG. They've had some environmental work done on the site, and there's no concern at this point for any sort of environmental issues. We did do soil test pits and borings and did not encounter any evidence of contamination at the site.
Were any of those borings done within the footprint of the building?
Yes.
That, or within the footprint of the existing?
Yeah, footprint of the new building.
What about the footprint of the existing building?
There was test pits done right behind it. We did a test pit right at the edge of the fence behind the building and got down about 10 or 12 feet with, it was all sand fill material.
Thank you.
Julie Wayne Scott here. Just a quick question, can you point me to where are those test pit locations on one of your plans that we have a copy of in front of us?
Actually, if you look at the, yep, the plan currently, it shows the four test pit locations we did for the drainage. There's one up next to the drywall at the front of the property. You'll also see, I guess it would be the northwest corner of the proposed, I'm sorry, the northeast corner of the proposed building. There was a soil test pit. We did a soil test pit right where the drywall is behind the property.
Okay.
See, I'm all here, one, two. Right? And one up here.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments?
One from me, Mr. Chairman. Michael Stankoff. So I just, I want to clarify the, just the, in the presentation, I just want to make sure that I caught a couple of things that you said correctly. You're increasing the number of infiltration basins. There's going to be no additional runoff capacity into those wetlands. There's going to be no disturbance of the wetlands during the construction process and afterwards as well, that the applicant wants to clean up the wetlands such that this permit might require permission to go into the wetlands and perform mitigation. Some of that mitigation might, could require new plantings, was one thing that was bandied about. And I just wanted to make sure that I got all that right. That is, everything that I just said, is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. So you're, there's going to be no additional runoff. There's no activity in the wetlands. That's great. I'm curious about additional impervious surface. So I know that you're going to be pushing back to the edge of the property a little bit more and increasing the size of the store slightly. So how much additional impervious surface is being added to the property on average? Just for purposes?
Bear with me one second.
Absolutely.
Seven, eight.
Sorry, could you say that again? I was unable to hear precisely what you said.
Yeah, okay, so in our drainage report, basically, it's approximately 7,667 square feet will be the increase.
And my last question, so how close to the wetland line are, is activity going to go? Are you going to go right up to the edge of the delineated wetland in the construction process? It seems like it's going to be very close. I just want to, from what I'm seeing, I want to clarify that.
Yep, if you look at the proposed erosion control line, which is a dark dashed line, that will be the limit of disturbance, which would be, we're proposing a combination of silt fence and straw bales.
Okay, perfect. No further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael. Any other questions or comments?
We are still in need of your report from your wetland scientist, David.
Okay, Richard just emailed that to me a few days ago. I can forward that to you today when we get done.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? We'll accept the application. Thank you, Mr. Faust.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Next application is C20-1022 Old Norwich Road, residential subdivision, Connecticut College owner and applicant, boundaries agent.
So this application came in on Friday. Really haven't had a chance to digest it yet, sorry. It is to create two new residential lots on property owned by Connecticut College, right on the lower end of Old Norwich Road, just across from where Benham comes down. And I have a pump station there on an adjacent property. You guys can see this from the This has come in, when you read through the application, they're requesting that the Waterford Conservation Commission for to finding that the proposed subdivision is not likely to negatively impact wetlands or watercourses to the Waterford Plan and the zoning commission. Staff's advice is that both these lots being proposed are almost completely within the upper review area, and the commission should accept this as a regulated activity that requires an independent permit from this commission. If you had a chance to read this, the application, it's on page four.
Questions or comments?
So we have, we have an application fee, so we can accept it. And the commission can have a chance to review this and then make such determination. and the commission can have a chance to review this and then make such determination or the applicant as an engineering firm, ready to answer any questions and make any modifications, the commission may see fit.
Okay.
Do we need to accept this as a regulated activity? Or do we just accept the application right now?
Well, they paid for regulated activity fees, I think you could
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on C twenty dash ten? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number four on the agenda, payment of the bills. We have one for the day, seventy-two dollars and eighty-five cents. Is there a motion?
Motion, hey, second.
Yeah, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Repose? Abstain? Motion carries. Maureen, anything else?
No, staff will be making, preparing reports on these four new applications for the commission's consideration. And we've taken some sidewalks to places I haven't been yet. And we will be meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
Does the commission want authorized staff to draft any findings or for approval for any of them?
Whatever you feel is appropriate, Maureen.
Okay.
We all set?
Is everyone going to be available or enough people available for two weeks for our next meeting at this time?
So that would be what, June twelfth?
The eleventh of June.
As far as we know right now, yeah, we'll keep it, keep the date open. Same time, Maureen, three o'clock?
Yes, it does fine with you guys.
Yeah. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make such a motion.
Smarted.
All favor? Thank you. See ya, two weeks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Maureen.
You're welcome. Goodbye.
Okay, Maureen, I'll talk to you soon.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.